Good evening. Welcome to the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education meeting for November 3, 2022. If I always like—Ms. Connell, will you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Everyone stand. Hands in your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chu Mash Tongva, Fernandino, Tatavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Thank you. Ms. Clark, roll call, please.
Member Frentner.
Present.
Member Agakanyan.
Present.
Clerk Weisberg.
Present.
Vice President Ferguson.
Present.
And President Tabit.
Present.
Thank you.
The district is sharing with you the passing of Joanne Bailey. We have been informed of the sad news of the passing of former longtime BUSD teacher, Joanne Ruckman Bailey, who passed away August 25, 2022, in Santa Rosa after a short illness. Joanne was hired by the district in 1958 and retired 38 years later. She taught at both Burbank High School and John Burroughs High School. Our thoughts are with her family and friends, including the many colleagues she worked with during her long career with Burbank Unified. Reporting on closed session, items in closed session were for discussion only. No action was taken. Any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll ask that we move—I think item 10C should—or 10B should be superintendent and superintendent comments or staff responses as it is in 14C. So I'm just going to be careful and move 14C up before public comment. To accommodate an announcement—an employee announcement.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Great. Items for future agendas.
Yes. If we could schedule a conversation about board member conduct, complaints, and how those are processed and discussed, that would be helpful.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Presentation—oh. Presentations and recognitions. Presentation on Burbank Arts and Education Foundation's BAEF Fall Grant Cycle. Yay!
Good evening, Superintendent Hill, President Tabit, school board, staff, and the Burbank community. We're very excited to be here this evening. My name is Caroline Solberg, and I'm the chair for the Grants Committee for the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. And we're very excited to share with you our fall grants. We had more requests this cycle than we've ever had before, and the amount of money that was asked for was greater than had ever been requested before. We're very excited that we were able to fully or partially fund 26 of those requests.
Fantastic.
So as I call your school, if those of you representing the school could come forward and stand here and then remain standing here through the announcements of all the schools, we'd appreciate that. First is Washington Elementary School. We helped to fund a theater workshop through 24th Street Theater for all first and second graders culminating in a field trip. We helped a teacher update her fourth-grade library. We provided funding for a full classroom set of headphones for two second-grade classrooms. Providencia Elementary School. We provided funding for updating and diversifying libraries for all grade levels, including special education classrooms. We also provided funding toward an assembly series that will cover science and multicultural music and dance. Edison Elementary School. We provided funding to a teacher to expand her social studies supplemental reading by purchasing books. We provided funding for their One School, One Book project, where every student and adult will read A Boy Called Bat and engage in discussions over the school year. Roosevelt Elementary School. We provided funding for more nonfiction books in their school library. Science spends for the fifth-grade grade level. We've provided funding toward their yoga instruction during PE and flexible seating options for students who need them. Miller Elementary School. We provided funding for lighting and supplies to transform classrooms as drama is integrated into core subjects. I know Miller's at Outdoor Science School this evening, and we are wishing them all a wonderful time. Emerson Elementary School. We provided funding to support their TK through third-grade music instruction program, as well as their multicultural dance program, which serves all grade levels. John Muir Middle School. We provided funding to a teacher to expand her classroom library, serving sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and her students worked with her to put this book list together. We provided funding to support a book list created by all of the English teachers and the school librarian to diversify the books that they are offering. And we provided funding for an instrumental coach for the band and orchestra programs. John Burroughs High School. We provided funding for cameras for the photography classes, and we provided funding for cameras for the digital media classes. We also provided funding for new instruments for the band. Monterey High School. We provided funding for lunchtime physical education equipment to promote socialization and relationship building as a transition to their new schedule. Burbank High School. We provided funding towards a graphic novel pilot program that two English teachers have created. We provided funding for instrument repair, as well as new instruments for the band and orchestra. Burbank Community Day School. We provided funding for a visiting artist to come in once a month to do art lessons that coordinate with their curriculum, and this program will continue throughout the school year. For the district, we provided funding for 10 teachers to attend the National Conference of Teachers of English. Now I'd like to bring up the chair of our foundation, Brenda Etterbeek.
This has been an incredible year of supporting Burbank Unified students. Our foundation is committed to meeting the diverse needs of every student, and this year's grants reflect our mission in action. Burbank Arts and Education Foundation is committed to growing our support next year and growing that. And thanks to our generous donors and corporate sponsors that help make this possible, we are proud to present this rather large check, both figuratively and physically, in the amount of $96,186.28. And we'd love a picture, if that's possible. Maybe turn around, I think. Can you see the board behind us?
I can see everything.
You can see everyone?
I can't see Gray. Just squish out Gray.
Does the school board need to stand?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Hi.
How are you? It's so lovely to see you.
Thank you.
Is my dinner? Okay. That's fine. It's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Arts and Ed Foundation. Those kinds of reports are some of my favorite because it's all—it's all about the good things all the time that are happening in our schools, and you just, you know, bring it up and out there. So I appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to make a comment?
Sure. Thank you, BAEF. We've, you know, talked over and over again about the great things that you've done over time, both as the independent foundations and now as the combined foundation. And once again, as you said, you've did more grants this year than ever before, and it's just fantastic. And we greatly appreciate the partnership with—the working with the foundation and look forward to doing it still more in the future. But thank you so much for all the effort and hard work that goes into it.
I also want to thank BAEF for all your hard work. I also want to thank all of our supporters and donors that give. It means a lot, especially, you know, nowadays, it's a little more difficult. But I'm very proud that despite all the challenges because of the COVID, we had the most successful year. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all of your work, as always. I think this is also coming out of the pandemic. So for you to take what funding you have and to really operationalize it for kids in this moment is big, and it pays dividends in big ways. So thank you for also—you know, as you were reading off some of the projects you were funding, you know, they really did complement some of the work that we're really trying to get accomplished in this district. So thank you for partnering with us. You know, sometimes it's really easy to raise money and say, "Throw it at this problem." There are many problems, as we can tell, in public education and just in general. And we're all working our best, but it really does work. We're able to address those problems more comprehensively when we're rowing together. So I just want to thank you for being partners in that way, on top of the large sum that you donated. Because I know you dug deep and coming out of this—I think Dr. Agakanyan definitely referenced it, but coming out of this moment and getting the fundraising wheels back up and running really take a great deal of effort. So just thank you. Thank you all, and thank you to the entire board for their work.
Thank you. Echoing Mr. Ferguson's sentiments, thank you all so much. This is huge. And I wanted to catch people before they left, but some people left. But I also think that this is a huge testament to our teachers and our administration and our and our staff, who are coming up with these phenomenally creative ways to enrich and deepen the work being done in all of our school sites. I mean, it's really easy to just do the bare minimum, but all Washington, PROV, Edison, Roosevelt, Miller, Emerson, Muir, JBHS, Monterey, Burbank High, and CDS all coming to you because they want to expand is—it's unbelievable. And I was going to say it later, but I'm just going to say it really quickly even though he's gone. But I had the pleasure of visiting with a Boy Scout troop this weekend, and they gave Mr. Osman quite a huge compliment when they said—no, they did. When they said that when they're going through really tough times, that they feel like they can always go to him, and that he'll actually listen to them and hear what they have to say and have a conversation. So I'd hoped I'd been able to share that with him while he was still here. But it's on the record now that he got a pretty great compliment from a group of awesome young men.
Thank you. Well, thank you again. We'll move on to the next best part of our meeting, hearing from our student board representatives. So we're going to start—is Catherine here? Nope. No Catherine from Monterey. Then we'll go next to Ever Huerta from JBHS, who handsomely stood on the field as part of the homecoming court last weekend. Good job.
Thank you. There we go. First, I just—I would like to say thank you. As a student who attends Burroughs, I will be seeing the changes, especially with someone who's taking photo. This is my first year taking photo, so I'm really excited seeing all the new equipment that we'll be working with and all the new programming, and especially with more cameras, giving the opportunity for more students to participate in that class, especially for it being such a class where many students want to participate and join. I have found a love for photography taking this class, and I will be probably buying a camera because of the class. So thank you, guys. Really, it truly makes an impact at the students at Burroughs. I will now start with my school report. Good evening, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, distinguished school board members, Superintendent Matt Hill, amazing district staff, and Burbank community here and watching. I'm super excited to share all the exciting events and things occurring here at Burroughs. We had our second spear week of the of the year this year. My personal favorite day was Barbecue Dads versus Soccer Moms. We loved seeing all our Bears dress up and showing their spirit, especially in our Wars Week leading up on Friday, which was the big game. As well, we have been working hard on providing our first-ever Latin American festival called Sabor Latino. We will be having exciting foods such as tacos, arepas, and empanadas. As well at Burroughs, we celebrated Dia de los Muertos, which takes—which starts on October 27 and goes all the way from November 2. Many people believe it's just November 1 and November 2. No, it is October 27. While celebrating Dia de los Muertos, ASB and Latinos Unidos partnered together. Latinos Unidos took on the majority of a building in Altar, where students could participate in putting pictures of their loved ones that have passed on. As well, Ms. Morrison and her art class built an ofrenda, which is as well a display to our entire campus. Ms. Morrison as well went into details explaining the history of an ofrenda, what is an ofrenda, and all the details of the—of what goes on the ofrenda. And fun fact, my favorite flower is also from comes from Dia de los Muertos in English, which is marigolds, but in Spanish is flor de sem pasuchil. So it's a really fun name, and I would say everyone to practice saying it. As well, we had our first annual pep rally of the year, including games such as a water balloon toss, pie-eating contests, and blindfolded musical chairs. It was amazing seeing Dr. Paramo there. Only thing we didn't like was his lanyard. We need to get him a Burroughs lanyard. As well, especially as celebrating at Burroughs, we are going to be celebrating Native American Heritage Month. We are—ASB is partnering up with our Indigenous Peoples Club at Burroughs, where we will be having activities such as a wellgrass mat weaving art and crafts with construction paper. As well, we will have Danse Azteca by Danse Tokayan, which will be coming on campus and performing. As well, we will be highlighting important figures of the Native American culture and background. We will as well be playing music coming from Native American artists and sharing the stories of Native Americans in the past and showing and bringing awareness of issues occurring. As well, we are excited to announce that our dance program will be hosting their annual Hip-Hop Explosion Dance tomorrow at 7:00. You can buy tickets and check out all the amazing things that they are planning and performances that they will be having. Moving on to the world of sports, though we had a tough loss against Burbank, we are still excited that our boys will be moving on to playoffs tomorrow, Friday, playing against Taksquitz—I think that's how you pronounce it. As well, as we wish luck today to our cross-country team, who headed off today to their league meet at Arcadia. Highlighting groups on different campuses, our link crew had an amazing time with their freshman tailgate, seeing everyone in participating games such as cornhole, face painting, and all the amazing snacks and seeing the dancing to music. I think I also enjoyed it myself and Ms. Cuseo Jr. enjoyed a good game of cornhole. For my first—for my first time playing cornhole—hey, Ms. Cuseo. For my first time playing cornhole, it was an exciting match with Ms. Cuseo. Surprisingly, I won, but it was a good back-and-forth with me and her. We had such an amazing time, especially with students seeing, "Oh, that's our assistant principal and our ASB president just going at it at cornhole." I'm pretty sure someone has us on video playing, but that was very exciting. As well, our Burroughs—at our Burroughs—at Burroughs, our Armenian club, has been sharing and raising awareness of the situation currently going on in Armenia. They have been selling shirts and pins, which all funds will be going to families affected with the situation. ASB has participated and partnered with them in elevating and sharing all the posts that they are putting, as well as lunchtime activities, and where today students painted their hands in the colors of the Armenian flag and put it on posters, which will be put up around campus that says, "We Stand With Armenia", showing that us in Burroughs are here to support all our students of Armenian background and to support each other in all these times of difficulty. And that is all for my report. If any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ever. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and the wonderful Burbank community. So this past month, ASB has been extremely busy for preparing for all our events in October, as I'm sure you guys have heard from Burroughs and Burbank. So yesterday, our DEI welcomed Aztec dancers onto our campus to perform at lunch for us in the middle of the quad. It was a great experience. I think it was so fun, and it was such an honor to see students come out and watch different cultures get to express themselves on our campus. And I think we're making a great step towards, you know, helping with DEI and equity. Also, our UNIDOS club was handing out bracelets yesterday in addition to the Aztec dancers. Last week, our Bulldogs won head-to-head with the Bears in our annual homecoming game, and I'm so, so, so proud to say that our football team won. So even though football was the ones on the field, many others worked tirelessly to make sure that all aspects of the game went perfect. From the halftime performances to the decorations on the sidelines, all the way to the balloon arches on the field, our band and cheer gave an amazing performance to our students to keep them spirited during halftime, and not to mention our lovely ASB, who was at the game setting up and working from beginning to end. Overall, all our fall sports this past season have worked really hard, and I couldn't be more proud of them. Also, last Friday, as mentioned before, happening at Burroughs and Burbank, it was our pep rally as well to end off our Spirit Week. And we had performance from our advanced dance team called Unleashed, our Palm Squad, our Cheer, our Marching Band, and not to mention each and every one of our fall sports. I would like to say that the overwhelming amount of spirit at the pep rally, I think, transferred over to the game and helped us secure the win, so I'm really proud of that. Also, this past weekend, our choir program had a Night of Magic production, which was their second Halloween-themed performance, where they provided a three-course dinner with a spooky Halloween show that was presented by all the choirs throughout the meal. In other news, tomorrow, November 4, at 7:00 PM in the Wolfson Auditorium, our junior class, in collaboration with our advanced dance team, Unleashed, is hosting Dancing with the Staff. So it's a dance competition where students from Unleashed teach up with our teachers and team up with our teachers and staff to create dances and compete against the other groups. Our staff and students have been working nonstop to prepare, so make sure to come out and see all these wonderful performances. Tickets are $10, and they can be bought from any ASB member or Unleashed dance member, and you can also buy them at the door, so I really recommend you come out. Also, our lovely dance program is also having their annual fall dance festival called Iconic on November 18 and November 19 in the Wolfson Auditorium. The show features icons from all over the music industry and highlights messages they spread throughout their music. The tickets are $20, and the VIP tickets are $25, so make sure to come out and support all our lovely incredible arts programs. So far, Burbank High is doing very well as we dive into November, and students seem to be enjoying the year so far. That's it for my report. Is there any questions?
I'll tell you later. No. Okay. Thank you. And you know what? Actually, thank you to all the ASBs. The amount of time you guys put in to make those special games, the pep rallies, that whole Spirit Week fun and exciting for everybody. I know how much work goes into that. You guys are amazing. And I—so thank you, because there has—I mean, for everybody, there's got to be another good reason to come to school, and you guys provide it, and I think that's extraordinary. And it builds camaraderie and school spirit, and that's something everybody needs. So thank you for providing that for our students. It's awesome. And you know what? The field did look great on Friday night. No matter who won, it looked great. So. And I liked, by the way, that you had the same decorations on both sides. Yeah, that was really neat. That was really cool. Okay. See what I do with my time, right? Anyone else? All right. We'll move on then. Thank you so much. We'll move on to staff. No, I'm ahead a page. Request to address the board. Oh, yeah, you're right. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Hill, it's your turn.
I'd like to have Dr. Paramo get a microphone to introduce our new principal at Luther Burbank Middle School.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, and members of the community. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce the new principal at Luther Burbank Middle School, Mr. Stephen Hubbell. Mr. Stephen Hubbell has been an educator for the past 26 years. Most recently, he has served as the Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction at John Burroughs High School. Stephen Hubbell has had administrative positions in both comprehensive high schools over the last five years, and he has served in every single AP position at the high school level. Before becoming an assistant principal, Mr. Hubbell was Title I Coordinator at Luther Burbank Middle School and the BUSD Summer School Principal. Mr. Hubbell taught chemistry and physics for 21 years as a high school science teacher in both the Burbank Unified School District and the William S. Hart Union School District. Mr. Hubbell was born and raised in Burbank, California. He attended McKinley, Jordan, now Dolores Huerta, and John Burroughs High School. He currently lives in Burbank and is the father of two teenage sons, one in college and one a junior at John Burroughs High School. It is my honor to present Mr. Stephen Hubbell.
I'm usually not short on words. If people know me really well, I usually have a gift to gab. I'd like to thank my family for coming out here, especially with my youngest son, who left football practice. He's got a game tomorrow. I'd like to thank also all the administrators that I've worked with over the years, from Luther to Burbank High to Burroughs. I'm going to miss a lot of people at Burroughs, its family. But I'm very happy and very proud to go over to Luther. The short time that I was at Luther, there was tons of great people, it's great staff, great teachers, and a great group of kids. Actually, even right before—I—this past week, I had one of my students over at Burroughs, who was a Luther—a Luther Yellow Jacket, who was about 5'4", who's now 6'5", and I made comments to him. I go, "It's been a long time." He goes, "Yeah, Mr. Hubbell." So I'm very happy to go back. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Any comments from my colleagues? Oh.
I do, too.
Well, firstly, congratulations, Mr. Hubbell. It's truly been a pleasure to work with you these past two years or however long. I've lost track, but you really deserve this position, all the hard work, and everything that you've done at Burroughs. It's truly been such a pleasure and honor to see you work with us in ASB, and been a pleasure to work with you and see how easy it is to work with you and how easy it is to communicate. You really deserve this position, and we can't wait to see you soar and be so successful at Luther. We'll miss you at Burroughs most definitely, especially—who else will I go to after ASB to go talk about what we did and hear just the feedback of everything? We'll miss you, Mr. Hubbell, but congratulations again. We can't wait to hear all the successful things that you do over there at Luther. So go show them how we do it at Burroughs.
Thanks. Dr. Weisberg.
Just want to say congratulations. Welcome is totally inappropriate because you've been here for forever. I just—it's really exciting. Luther is such a phenomenal community. I've spent a lot of time there this year, especially at the beginning of the year, and just the passion that the parents and the teachers and the staff have, and the students, too, is extraordinary. So I can't wait to see all the positive changes and growth that happen there and just know that you have partners in the board to support you along the way. So can't wait to see what's next for Luther.
Just congratulations. We're so happy for you. I can't think of a more perfect fit for the position. And it's great to see— And it's great to see that your family has given so much to the Burbank and to the BUSD community, and seeing that continue with, with you moving into this position is fantastic. But Luther is a school that's very close to my heart among all of them in the district, and I'm happy to see you moving into that position, and I look forward to seeing you there. Congratulations.
I'm just going to echo what my colleague said, and congratulations, Mr. Hubbell, and if you ever need anything, you know where to find us, so, thank you.
Well, I, I can only say, well, I can say a lot, right? But I am going to say congratulations to the Yellow Jacket Nation, because I think that they have a principal now who will represent them well, lead them well, and provide good things for kids. I know that will happen with you, Mr. Hubbell, because I've seen you do it before. I've followed your career. We grew up in this community. I've known you for years. I'm a big fan of your mom, so it just stands to reason that another Hubbell should take a leadership role in this community and our community of BUSD. So congratulations, my friend. Congratulations.
Long time coming, so congratulations on, on finally getting to be at the helm of a ship in this kind of prime way. So congratulations. I know you're a lifer. You know, you'll continue to be a lifer probably, but again, it's really great to see those kind of success stories, frankly, of our own community taking on the helms of our institutions. At one time, those reins were in one shape or form in your mother's hands, and now professionally, they've certainly been in yours. But it's really been great to see you differentiate yourself from her service and really build kind of your own work ethic, your own reputation, and now to see that deployed on behalf of a campus that needs a lot of help, needs a lot of support, and is going to need the kind of flexible leadership that I think you are kind of innately prepared for as somebody who grew up here and you know what you're up against in this community from time to time when it comes to really taking care of and making hard leadership choices to keep institutions strong. So I really trust you in that regard, and I trust that you'll, we've interacted a handful of times, but I have a very deep trust of you because of your roots in this community and because of your reputation professionally. So I wish you the best of luck, and if I can ever be a partner in that, I'm here for you.
Didn't, wasn't purposeful. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Now we can move on to public communications. So an individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item by completing a white request, regret, oh my gosh, request card and turning to Mrs. Clark. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker except by unanimous consent to the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. We're also providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. Any individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction during one of the three public comment sections, which we have combined into one. Do we still have a virtual speaker this evening?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. So I have two cards. We'll begin with Mr. Schlossman, followed by Rosemary Morrison.
Just a few random thoughts here. I was thinking, I observed again that Ms. Weisberg didn't stand for the flag salute, and I was thinking about the parallels between that gal sitting, that basketball player sitting in Russia over some trivial matter. She got 10 years, and she used to take a knee for whatever reason, and I'll bet she, I'll bet she wants to be back in America right now. Okay, here's a few reasons why we stand for the flag salute. We stand for the flag today not to please ourselves, but to honor those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, and that's in the millions. That's a big number. We stand for the flag not to focus on what divides us, but to focus on what unites us, which is being American. We stand not because of past or present pain caused by injustice, but to salute the principle of justice. We stand, this is my favorite, and I think it applies to you, Ms. Weisberg, more than the others. We stand for the flag not for our generation, but to set an example for the next generation. I have here the oath of office that you took, and I'll read a few words from it. All of us have taken it. If you work for the government, you do. You said that I will bear true faith and allegiance. Ooh, there's that pesky word, allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and here's allegiance in your oath that you took. I think you should resign because you won't pledge your allegiance, and you've broken this promise, this oath. It's a sacred oath. It goes on to say allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely. So you've breached your word without any mental reservations. So you've got plenty of reservations. So I hope you'll dwell on it, on the hypocrisy and the betrayal of your word. Shameful. Now, some other things. The city council's talking about banning leaf blowers, and I know we have a large department that takes care of our grounds, and we use leaf blowers. So how's that going to affect us, Mr. Hill? And, you know, the time it takes, you know, there's a cause and effect to this thing, and I wonder how that's going to be. I got your survey about what to, what you want to spend money on and asking people. You didn't, unless I missed it, I mean, I make mistakes too, but there was nothing in it about the FACS program, and that's concerning to me. I don't know if they need anything. I just noticed that they were missing. It's not the first time you've left that group of people out, and they are the most vulnerable kids in our district. It's my recommendation to you that you save that money for a rainy day, because I know how you love to spend money, and it might be wise to put it aside. I go over to the adult school, and I see that you have a large solar array in the parking lot that was spent with our tax dollars, and I wonder if you've done a cost-benefit analysis to see if that thing's paying for itself, so we don't make that mistake again. Finally, we come to Mr. Cantwell. Is that you, sir? Nice to meet you. Welcome to Burbank. I wish you well. But I've come here and I've given my opinion on different things, and I've, they've called me the trifecta here, you know, sexist, racist, and homophobic when I question what's going on here. So what's very concerning to me is how the superintendent could hire somebody who worked for an organization with a statement of faith that says, "Man has two distinct genders, male and female. Marriage is a lifelong union between one man and one woman. That all sexual intimacy outside of heterosexual monogamous marriage is contrary to the design and purpose." So I wonder why you worked for that organization, because that's, you know, very troubling to me. All of us kind of disagree with some of those things. And, Mr. Hill, would you agree why, would you explain to all of us why you hired this man, if you know about it? Because either he believed it to be true, or he needed the money and was willing to...
Thank you. Time's up. Moving on to Rosemary Morrison.
Good evening.
And our final speaker, Rosemary Morrison.
Hi, guys. Hi. How are you all? I miss you all daily. I came up here, I came up here to talk about just a few things. First, I saw that Disney's asphalt, I'm so tired, it's fine, asphalt was somewhat completed, so I'm really excited about that. I just had questions about the trees, the tetherball, I was going to ask my daughter, what was it? Tetherball, the wall, those things, when those things will be put in. My son is not particularly happy about the paint job yet. It's like, it's not done. We will be okay. It will be okay. But one of the things that really, if you know me, you know that I really don't like drills. It is a stressful thing for me, and I'm kind of glad I wasn't at Disney during the Great Shakeout, because their emergency bin wasn't there. And to find out that their emergency bin is not back on campus, it freaks me out, and I'd really like to know why our bin is not back, because we cannot walk across the street if there's an emergency. That bin should have been one of the first things placed back on our campus, and it isn't. And I would like to know when it's going to come back, and when are our children going to be able to have everything they need in case of emergency. The next thing I want to talk about is transparency with this district and communication. Couple of days ago, my daughter says, "Mom, there's a petition about Tuesdays." I was like, "There's nothing about Tuesdays. Everything is fine about Tuesdays. This is just a hoax." Then come to find out today, while I am at work, I'm getting texts about how the students at Burrows are getting information that the parents of those students have not even gotten about getting rid of early Tuesdays next semester, because something with the state and the hours. All of that, I understand, it's just like what happened with Monterey with the hours, and we have to comply with the state. So my argument is not about complying with the state. My anger, I'm sorry, because I do feel a lack of anger. Should not, and I feel a lot of anger, clearly I'm tired. I should not be hearing about this from my student, even if it's just in talks, even if it's just something the union has to talk about. Because one, I'm like, as a teacher, I'd be pissed I'm missing my planning period, but that's not what I'm here for. I am here because if you take, if Tuesdays are taken, there's a lot of parents and families that might be disrupted. Siblings go home to watch other siblings that get out early. But you're telling people, no, you're not telling people, you're telling students before parents, and that is disturbing on all levels. Even if you bring it up in December, how are people going to plan? Yes, it's high school, but some high school students have jobs. They babysit. There are things that need to be communicated, at least that it's in a thought. So please, I'm up here all the time about your lack of communication. Something needs to be done. That's all I'm saying. Second, I don't know, I wasn't here last meeting, and I actually didn't get a chance to do it, but, third, I'm on third, sorry. I had this idea, because I really love our student board members, and I'm always like, "Why can't they respond?" To, "They can? Awesome." That's what I was wondering. I know, right, Ever? I was like, "I live for these things. I love it. I love it." So I'm so glad. Okay. And finally, one of the reasons why I wasn't here last week talking about the emergency bin is what happened the last time I was here. Ms. Weisberg, thank you for sitting. Millions of people died for your right to sit down and your freedom of speech. Thank you for those of you who saw my reaction. I honestly felt like I was back in Clearwater, Florida, and being the only black person in the room having an impact, that nobody else would understand why I was having an impact because of somebody's words. And I appreciated all of your responses. I just wanted to let you know that. And I will not, it took a lot for me not to give power to those words, because I didn't know I could still be triggered. And so I appreciate it. I appreciate your willingness, I do not like to cry, but I do appreciate your willingness to talk to me about it and shut that down. I am going home, so, well, maybe I'll listen. There's only two comments. Oh, wait, and then I'm going. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. No virtual. We're good? Okay? So staff responses.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you, Mr. Schlossman and Ms. Morrison. Mr. Schlossman, the leaf blower ban is on gas blowers. We have purchased some electric leaf blowers, so we're going to transition over to electric blowers, so we still have those. FACS gets funding specifically for special education, but there's specific needs or projects that FACS could do. There is a comment box on the survey, so please complete that, or people can email me, so we can be thinking about how we can use the one-time funds for the FACS program. We can't save the money as a rainy day. There is an end date to each of those funding sources, so we need to make sure that we spend it thoughtfully over the end date, but we have continued conversations. The one-time funding survey is another input that we can take. We've been talking to principals, we're talking to cabinet, we'll be presenting to the board the first draft for conversation at the December meeting, and then another board conversation in January. So we welcome all of the feedback, and I encourage everyone to complete the survey, and if there are things that are missing, please add that to the comment boxes. On the solar structures, we do a cost-benefit analysis. I'll have Mr. Cantwell follow up with you offline. Regarding the statement of faith, Mr. Cantwell's old organization, all candidates that interviewed for the Burbank Unified School District received the anti-racist statement, and there was a writing prompt to that, and all employees know that they need to fully commit to our core values and the work that we do here in this district. Mr. Cantwell is very open to speaking with anyone that has a concern about his prior organization, so if you want, he can reach out to you, or you can reach out to him. Ms. Morrison, Mr. Cantwell, I'll see if he can do it when he does the facilities update. I don't have the exact timeframe on the trees, tetherball, and the wall. I know some of those have been ordered, so we're waiting on those to be delivered. If he has an update, we'll do it tonight. Otherwise, we'll follow up and have an update sent out to the whole Disney community and put it on their website. Same thing with the emergency bin. I know striping of the asphalt and finishing some of that with some of that, I think, where it's going to be placed, so they didn't want to move it before that was done. Transparency Communications, I need to follow up with Dr. Paramo and Dr. Chambers. Due to late start, we recently received information from the state that we can't qualify our zero-period minutes for instructional minutes, so therefore we can't have as many early release days. We've been working with the principals to brainstorm through that. You're absolutely right, though. It shouldn't go to students before it goes to parents, so I need to see what happened during that process. We will follow up on that one. And yes, student board members can respond if they want to respond on any of those items as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, board member responses. Mr. Fritner?
Thank you to our, all our speakers, all two of our speakers tonight. We appreciate you always coming out, sharing your thoughts. Mr. Schlossman, the superintendent kind of gave you answers on the leaf blowers and the, and also the FACS program funding, but definitely that is something we should also fund, so please do respond to that and, you know, with, with comments and suggestions. Regarding the flag salute, I, you directed your comments to Dr. Weisberg, and I will let her, she has no trouble defending herself, and I don't feel the need to. I will say, I make a personal choice to stand and salute the flag when we do the flag salute, but I greatly respect anyone who has the, who, because of their beliefs chooses to take a protest in that format. It's not an easy thing to do, I don't believe, especially for a public official. Obviously, there have been a lot of athletes who have been, who have done that and have been targeted for criticism because of it, but the, it doesn't mean they don't respect the country, but it does mean they realize there are aspects to this country and, and the way it treats some of its citizens that need to be recognized. And I have no trouble with anyone who wants to take that format of protest. Ms. Morrison, thank you. Always wonderful to see you. The emergency bin, I agree, that should have been, as the superintendent mentioned, I know there was a little delay because we were waiting for the striping, and frankly, the striping, once again, took longer than it was supposed to. But yes, it should have been back on already, so we'll make sure that that is, you know, is getting done. And the equipment, as Mr. Cantwell will have a presentation, I think we'll touch on some of that in his presentation. of that in his presentation. And I agree, I was not aware of the possibility of changes in schedule at our high schools on Tuesdays, and that shouldn't be going to students before the rest of us know. So there was a communication failure there that we need to make sure that that is tightened up because it leads to further issues rather than getting out ahead of things. As you pointed out, there are very valid reasons, the superintendent touched on it, why we have to look at addressing this. And it's great that we are brainstorming it with our administrators, but that information needs to be shared and shared sooner. So I hope we make sure that that is happening going forward. And those were our only comments, so that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Aga Khanian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank also all of our speakers. I think my colleagues already addressed some of the concerns. I do want to take this opportunity, I had to thank Mr. Robert Mahamadi, who's the assistant principal at Student Services at Burbank High School. I had the opportunity to go and meet a group of young students. These are students who are new to the country, have some language challenges. And I found the hour I spent with the students, you know, not only interesting, but also kind of reminding where I was when I was in their shoes, being here myself at the age of 17, not speaking the language. And I think this is a continuation of conversations with some of these students, also trying to, you know, bring some individuals, we can mentor them if necessary, or talk to them about what their choices are and how important it is for them to graduate high school and continue their education. So I do want to thank Mr. Mahamadi and all the staff at Burbank High School for allowing me to do this. And I also had a very productive meeting with our district's environmental committee. We had a brainstorming workshop session, Ms. Karen Lau and all the volunteers that were there. And that included some of our own principals and teachers from our schools as we're shaping up what the vision for Burbank is when it comes to sustainability and also green technology. And I think the direction that we're going, it's not only amazing, but also it's going to really generate opportunities for our students as we're talking about partnering up with entities who not only provide scientific services, but also do job training in the green field and the green technology itself. And I think ultimately, we will also, you know, be able to save money for the district as we're looking at how we spend energy when it comes to leaving lights on, you know, how do we go toward more green technology where ultimately it's not only good for the environment, the world, our students, but also when it comes to saving money, it does help. And this is just the start. I'm very excited about this committee, and I want to thank all the individuals who spent Saturday morning for two and a half hours going to the very wonderful workshop. And that's it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg?
Thank you. Mr. Schlossman, I love that you always give me an opportunity to do like history teacher minute. So thank you for that. The first thing I do want to clarify is that you're talking about Brittany Greiner. Her name is Brittany Greiner. She's been detained in Russia for over 250 days. Actually, wear this pin on my backpack and have since she's been detained. And I say that because it's important to know the names of the people that we use as false flags when we're trying to promote patriotism. A fun fact that you also might not know is that the Pledge of Allegiance was written by a pretty overtly racist fellow in 1892 as a publicity stunt to sell American flags to commemorate the 400-year anniversary of Christopher Columbus discovering America. So when you talk about the symbols that we pledge to, I would rather think about the country that I pledged to and not something that was created as a publicity stunt. I honor the men and women who fought for our country, not a piece of fabric. And I choose to sit, as Mr. Fritner put, making a very difficult decision because I know it leaves me open to people like you who use your five minutes to berate for reasons that are completely alien to me. So I encourage you to learn more about the history of the pledge and what it actually means and what it actually stands for. And I guarantee you, when you speak to any of our amazing men and women who have served in the armed forces, they will tell you that they fought for this country and not for the flag. So I encourage you, if you want to attach deep meaning in symbols, that's well within your right. I choose to invest deep meaning in our country and what it means to truly be patriotic. Let's see. Ms. Morrison, thank you, as, oh, you're sorry. Thank you for being here, as always. Your indefatigable love of BUSD is inspiring. I mean it. I mean it. I think it's great when you come here. You usually bring up something that I didn't know before. So it's a really important thing for us to know, as Dr. Hill said, that we need to explore why our students heard about that information first so that we can make sure that it doesn't happen again. And had you not come tonight, maybe that wouldn't have been something we discussed. So I'm grateful to you, unironically, for bringing that up. It's really, really important. So thank you. And also thanks to you and your daughter for welcoming into your Girl Scout troop where we talked about elections and civic participation. So, and, yes. Lastly, I just want to wish people who observe Dia de los Muertos, I hope you had a meaningful celebration. And I also, as we often do, and we've done for Armenian students and in other situations, I also want to acknowledge our Jewish students and faculty and staff. It has been a really rough couple of weeks. I can only speak for myself as a Jewish person. It's been a really rough couple of weeks. I know that our students experience a lot of different things on campus, and we know that antisemitism is one of them. And just as we push back as a community against any form of bigotry, I know that we're pushing back against this as well, but I think it was, I wanted to say it and acknowledge it and recognize that it is challenging right now. So if you need to connect with somebody, if you need to talk with somebody, I know that there are resources available and that we as a board and the district staff stand with you as well. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Thank you. I was just making sure.
It's hard to.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you very much. Thank you to both of our speakers for coming down this evening. First, to Mr. Schlossman, thank you for bringing up the leaf blowers comment. If we can get a report back on how many leaf blowers are electric, how many are not, and then we might as well, while we're at it, adopt a phase-out plan for those that are gas-powered, unless there are a few that we need to retain in cases of an emergency or situation. That seems to make sense to me, but it seems to me like the whole state is going this way, so we might as well plan now. And with one-time money surveys happening, seems to make sense.
Can I, since you're, I'm sorry, since you're asking, can we add on to that, all the changes we're doing to electric? Because I think we're doing some mowers, too.
So I had previously asked for a board report on switching to electric vehicles as well. So that has not come up, and so maybe your request can finally get us some support to get it up and over and finally onto a board agenda. So, second, on the FACS program, I find that concerning that we didn't include FACS on the survey. The challenge is, is that the FACS program impacts a relatively limited number of families. So quantitatively, on a survey, to appear and to make an impact, it's going to be more challenging unless there are qualitative assessments that allow for that kind of cross-referencing. So I really believe that we need to be, especially with attitudes related to our performance during the pandemic with this community, extra mindful of inclusionary behavior that demonstrates that we want to make sure that they are a part of funding decisions, that we want them to be a part of the more critical conversations that we're having about directions in our district. We have an obligation to serve them like any other student in this district, but they have greater needs. And so even if, again, just that small inclusion allows us to actually open the gateway, not just for funding for FACS, but maybe specific problems that allow us to, you know, redesign workflows and other things that can support those students in different ways that we can address with other funding allocations. So I really just want to make sure that, you know, I don't know if there's a checklist that we need to do with every survey, just making sure that all tribes and all camps are covered, but that would be important to me as just kind of a standard moving forward. Ms. Morrison, thank you. It's always good to see you. Thank you for the heads up on the emergency bin. We're moving, right? Everybody's attention's on that, so thank you for that. And then on the communication front, I know a lot, a lot of things are moving, but we've heard consistently enough at this point about communication. So I'm going to ask that every district meeting, and with two questions. Do we need to communicate about this? Who do we need to communicate with? End of every agenda, way to close out the meeting. That way, we can get focusing back on an issue that the public has demonstrated time after time after time again that there are concerns about. Site administrators running around doing a lot. District administrators running around doing a lot. I get that. So maybe it's a physical tool that needs to be listed on the bottom of agendas and emails to figure this out, as a reminder to get us to a culture of communication and transparency that will allow parents to better engage. If they don't like the communication, that's one thing. But we should be communicating and not necessarily trusting our lovely students who are amazing, but again, also minds in a million different places to be couriers of that information forward. So I would like to see that as a very real practice that's implemented as a part of management meetings moving forward. When it comes to, sorry to jump back and forth, Mr. Schlossman, when it comes to Dr. Weisberg, when it comes to Mr. Cantwell, frankly, and trying to examine his views and beliefs, everybody demonstrates their views differently. I don't know what everybody here believes. Lord knows, we work together and we kind of figure it out. First Amendment, one heck of a civics lesson, right? Where you really have to push past what makes you uncomfortable at times and trust that there's a patriot there in times when you don't see patriotism on display. I respect Dr. Weisberg. I know her to be a patriot. Mr. Cantwell, I've seen you for two meetings. You didn't shake my hand last meeting. Having said that, I trust that you're a patriot. And, you know, I think we're going to, we're going to work together on this front. We're a country right now where everybody's questioning patriotism, frankly. I think that's the case. And as a member of a community that frankly is targeted, very similar to many of the other board members and staff members who live and who are working here, this is a scary time, and we've got to trust somebody or else this is going to get chaotic real quickly. To Dr. Weisberg's community and the Jewish community generally, who are dealing with banners being unfurled over the 405, saying it's okay, the multiple times her name is mispronounced and misspelled on emails, it's pretty gross. Pretty tired of it, just to be real. Gay stuff always gets brought up. I'm tired of it. Like, dog whistling, right, left, right, left, dog whistle. None with it. So if we're not going to build a culture that supports each other in that and calls that out and supports people who are learning, because lord knows we make mistakes, I think for impacted communities, we're living with a lot more fear than a lot of people know. And we got to be there for each other because that's what makes this whole system work, even when we disagree with each other fundamentally. And we got to reflect back when people are letting us down. Speaking of which, not necessarily business in our country, but certainly impacting the students of our country, there was, a few weeks ago, in Yerevan, Armenia, there were two individuals, Tigran and Arson. Deep breath. Okay. So Tigran and Arson were two young men who took a photo, holding hands, and after they took that photo, they jumped off a bridge together, sending a message about homophobia in Armenia and globally, truthfully. To see such potential in young people, that's the best part about this job, right? You never know which one's going to change the world. You do, you just never know. But to see two young men like that hold hands and then jump off a bridge, it says something about our world. And I know a lot of kids, frankly, who feel very similarly about how they're seen, not just within the Armenian-American community, but with all, within all of our different tribes. So I am going to ask, because frankly, their action was disturbing. It disturbed my heart. It disturbed me. I'd like to do work on this. And so I would like to see if it would be okay to explore some of the one-time funding potentially to address homophobia, transphobia, specifically within cultural communities, which have challenges, various challenges. All communities have challenges with acceptance. I'm not saying that, but we have to approach it differently from community to community in order to provide space. I am okay with exploring this with the Social Impact Center, potentially, but believe we need to bring in culturally relevant speakers. GALLAS, the Gay and Lesbian Armenian Society, and others who can help us with this conversation. I do not want this handled in-house and would really prefer to be able to work together with this, potentially with leadership. This is a time where people are jumping off bridges because they don't think their relationship can survive the world. Let's work to create a better world where people don't have to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to both of our speakers tonight. Appreciate you bringing forward your thoughts and ideas. Mr. Schlossman, I believe, truthfully, that you have the right to come up and say what you want to say, just as Dr. Weisberg has the right to make choices for herself as well. I know it's a hard decision each week for you, as I'm sure sometimes it's a hard decision for you, Mr. Schlossberg, for you to come up and...
Schlossman.
Schlossman. Yes, Schlossman. I should have those cards in front of me. Too much on my mind. I apologize. For you to come up and decide what you're going to talk about as well. It's not an easy time. It's not an easy decision to make, and so whether we agree or disagree doesn't really matter, but I approve of your choice to make that choice for yourself. So I just really want to say that to you, face to face. Ms. Morrison, thank you. I was a little surprised, too, and I, because I hadn't heard of any survey. So it makes me wonder, you know, sometimes teachers blurt things out that maybe they've heard at a staff meeting. Does that mean the students took it on themselves? So I'm, I'm, want to get to the bottom and see what really was taking place? Because I, I, let's just wait and see. I think there's a backstory, and we'll figure it out and make sure that we all get to hear that information, so. And I, same thing on the emergency bin. I'm wondering, because I know they're not going to move that bin with it full. And so...
Full last night?
No, I think you empty it. So I'm wondering where that stuff is, because would they empty it, move the bin, and put the stuff back in the bin across the street? Or is the stuff for the emergency somewhere on campus? It's not. Okay. So where did, yeah, so then they must have refilled it back up, which means they're going to have to empty it and move it, and they were most likely waiting for the asphalt to cure. So, but it's time. We need to get it back on that campus. Or at least the emergency supplies need to be back on campus at the very, at the very least. So we'll work on that. So thank you both for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. Sometimes, you know, as we saw with you, Ms. Morrison, that's the first time we learn of it, when you hear it from your kid and bring it back to, back here. It doesn't mean it's official. It just means it's... It just means it's something that's happening and we need to fix it, figure it out, so. It's been a busy month. Been to a lot of sporting events, a lot of arts productions. I'm very excited and hopeful for Prop 28 that will help fund our arts programs in the district without any cost to voters and citizens, or homeowners, or any of the other people who make money and get taxed for it folks. So, I think, looking forward to that. Attended both choir events, Bob Burrows on Broadway, and the Night of Magic. Both, I mean, makes you very proud to be involved in Burbank Unified, to see what talent our kids have. And just like the kids from ASB who put in so much time and effort, so do those kids, and so do their parents. Those programs don't run by themselves. And the parents' support is amazing to see, so. And the directors and the coaches and the advisors that put in additional time beyond the board day to do what they do for kids is really important, and I thank them. We had a great time at all the events, and it's great to see the absolute pure talent of all of our students, no matter which way it's focused. Organizing people, playing games, putting on productions. It's tireless work, but boy, at the end of that day, do they look like they've had the time of their lives. And I think that's a great experience for kids. So, thank you to all of you who helped to make that happen. And there's lots more coming up in the near future. Best of luck to the Bears in playoffs. I wish it wasn't so far away on a Friday afternoon, you know, where you would have to battle traffic. It's at least a two-and-a-half hour drive out there to watch that game. So, I'm hoping somebody will be tweeting from the game. Did you hear me? Someone tweet from the game, so we know what's going on. Please. And good luck, and congratulations to the Bulldogs and Coach Coleman, who did an outstanding job on Friday night. It was a great game on both sides, really great. So, and that's the way football goes sometimes. And yeah, and again, good luck to the Bears. So, thank you, everyone, and we will ever. I apologize. Got something to say? Take your turn.
Thank you. Well, I didn't know I could respond to public comment. Happy to know that I can now. Ms. Morrison, I will address you because you, I know what you are talking about. So, on, if I'm not mistaken, Wednesday, we received news from a teacher. Students received news from a teacher saying that our early release was going to be removed from our schedule and that our academic excellence period was also going to be removed from our Monday due to the zero period not meeting the requirements for the minutes, which then led to a bunch of students posting on social media, because that is one thing we are good at. And it has created more students to be aware of the situation of what is occurring at Burrows with the schedule change, which as well, has led to a petition that is being led by Burrows student. When I first pulled it up, we were at 295 signatures. We are now, in the time of the board talking, at 305 signatures of students and parents signing for keeping the schedule that we have currently, especially so far that we've been in the year. We've all grown accustomed. I have grown accustomed. I like my Tuesdays, because I get to leave early and I get a little break from ASB before going back in and going straight to work. And as well, the concerns that you brought up. Students who take care of their siblings, students who have jobs, students have already formed their schedule around the schedule that we have, which then thus, changing the schedule creates a disruption in the schedule, which does not make anybody happy. And we are currently seeing that. And it really doesn't help, especially when students are asking our admin team if that is true of the schedule change. And our admin responds, "Well, we can't talk about that right now. Can't comment about that." And it really puts a burden on us. It adds confusion, especially going home and telling our parents, "Well, the schedule is going to be changed, but we don't have any details." And it really, it really does affect us and make us, it throws us off our game, especially with such a busy school year that we are having. But yeah, life.
Yes, Mr. Ferguson, go ahead.
So, just a heads up, as this was not communicated, so, another little lesson that we're learning. Board bylaws make student, allow student board members to make motions to second items and to respond during comment. So, the only thing that you can't make motions on are employment-related issues. So, otherwise, you can move and you can second and you can chat anytime. So, you're a full member, in that sense, so. Don't threaten him with a good time. There we go. Awesome.
Okay. Now, moving on to reports to the board.
Board President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, members of the board, staff, and community. This evening, I'd like to provide an overview of our challenges with the District Custodial Service and what we're doing to improve the situation. Before we do jump into the PowerPoint, I just want to acknowledge two groups. The first group is for our teachers and tireless staff, who are serving the kiddos in this community. Those who are watching at home tonight or who will watch the video in the future. I sympathize with the frustrations I've heard this past month. Our faculty has been patient. They've been understanding. They've been hardworking for a long time as we've confronted a variety of facility challenges. On behalf of the district leadership, I want to say sorry. We are committed to improving this. And I can even understand why there's skepticism that some may have as to whether or not this will actually improve. And so, I just want to say, I hope that everyone will hear the intentionality, the creativity, and the focus the district is taking with these current challenges. Okay? The second group I want to acknowledge is our custodians. We have many, many custodians who go above and beyond daily for their schools, for every person who comes on, steps foot on their campus. They take pride in their work. Often, it's a thankless job. They're underpaid. There's often vacancies and absences that do shift workload across the site. And these men and women are certainly not the problem. They're a critical piece of the solution. So, I hope that anything that I say tonight does not sound as criticism directed toward those committed staff members. So, with those two acknowledgements, I do want to jump into what we actually do identify as the key challenges that we've been facing across the district. I apologize if the PowerPoint print is a bit small. First challenge is around various aspects of management. You know, we have heard clear feedback from staff when it comes to overtime procedures and granting of overtime, just some lack of clarity on the employee side, because we had a recent change that turned what sometimes may have been only a single document to be able to grant the overtime request. It's called a position transaction requisition. Now, because of a change that occurred in the past few years, it went from a single piece of paper for a given month, might turn into 28 pieces of paper. And so, we have now made that change, that we've gone back to go into a blanket PTR. But just one small example of my, identify some of the challenges. We'll talk about, again, some of the solutions. But the, some of the challenges with overtime relate to, again, some of the paperwork that our department was not in alignment with some of the other departments across the district. And so, we're bringing ourselves back into compliance. We also know that, you know, for all staff, that evaluations, both formal and informal, is critical, that we give clear direction, clear expectations, and then opportunities for feedback and improvement. And so, that was something that has been lacking in the department for many years. We also know that when it comes to both the custodial supervisors and other positions within the department, for a variety of reasons, most recently, because of just the lack of staffing and the need for our custodial supervisors to be in the field putting out fires with doing cleaning themselves, we've not been able to get to sites as frequently as we should for, again, direct supervision, direct support, training, and again, feedback for our custodial staff. So, we see a number of challenges on the management side. We hear a lot about custodial vacancies. You can see right now, we've listed seven current vacancies. I'm happy to say that's actually an outdated number. We did hire two new custodians this week. The challenge is, and what's so discouraging, is we actually had 15 interviews lined up for Tuesday. And we had a total of four individuals show up. So, we had 11 no-shows of those four. Three of them have full-time custodial assignments within the district that's been offered. One was not able to advance through the interview process. But, again, appreciation for what Human Resources and what the department has been doing. These are not the same positions that just remain open for extended period. We filled 16 positions in the past 12 months, and the current vacancies we have are all from October 1st or more recent. So, when you hear vacancies, don't think, again, it's a single site that just, or a single set of sites that have had vacancies exclusively for extended periods. In some cases, because of various leaves and FMLA leaves, there are some sites that have had extended absences. But by and large, we are filling these positions, but we just unfortunately have had a pretty significant turnover percentage in the department that have led to the frequent vacancies. We also had our evening custodial supervisor position vacant for six months. Again, just as a small anecdote as to what the department's been facing, we flew that position three times. We actually offered it to an individual who accepted, but then never began. And so, then we had to go out another time for recruitment. And fortunately, we have an absolutely outstanding individual, 10-year employee of the district, custodian at multiple sites, who was hired for that position about six weeks ago and is just doing a stellar job as he transitions in. We also are facing a complete lack of custodial subs. In recent past, we had over 30 subs on the sub list. Right now, we have four on the sub list, only one of whom actually returns calls on a regular basis. And the good news, is also a bit of bad news, is that that individual was just given a full-time position with us this week. So, we're excited to have him rewarded for his commitment to the district with a benefited position. But it does mean that our sub pool now has just reduced by near 100%. But we're working on it. And I said a moment ago when acknowledging our custodians, the truth is that compensation is a major challenge for us, and it's a challenge across the district. But these positions in particular, you can see our starting salary at 1623. I mean, our, you know, some of our competitors, even until you like Target, we are told, you know, it starts at $20 or more an hour. And so, when we are so far below market in some of these positions, it does create challenges with filling the vacancies. So, here's what we're doing. First, significant enhanced management support. Again, you can see a number of things that we're doing. First, over the past week, I've been meeting at each of the school sites. I actually created this slide a few days ago with anticipation that I would have gotten to everyone before this meeting. I regret to say I have not. Tomorrow, we have five more meetings lined up and we'll be concluding in the next two or three days. Site visits, everyone at sites with a custodial supervisor, facilities representative, as well as myself, talking about some of these changes, hearing from them, where their challenges are, making sure that we have eyes and visibility to it, and working closely with the site staff. We're reinstating our monthly all custodial staff meetings. That's a great opportunity for us to provide training, to, again, provide opportunities for a single message getting out across all sites at once. And so, that's something that was consistently occurring last school year and just for the past few months, we weren't able to kick it off this school year just yet, but it's happening this month. The expectation for our custodial supervisors, now that we have both staffed, is that they're at every single site every single week. That might only be a 20-minute visit, but again, if they're the direct supervisors, they need to be, they shouldn't be introducing themselves to the custodial staff at the time they're giving evaluation. And so, they will be providing that onsite training extensively on a weekly basis. I also am going out, I've shared, after our meeting last two weeks ago, when it ended a bit early, I was expecting to go home till closer to 11:00, so I ended up having some time to go and introduce myself to some of our custodial staff across the district, went to five sites. And that's going to be, again, a regular routine is either starting at 6:00 a.m. to meet some of the morning crews or being able to work late to meet some of the evening crews. So, the idea being, again, a lot more visibility at the sites with leadership. We're creating a number of improved communication channels. And so, that's everything from a Google form for site admin to communicate directly with supervisors and myself to know about problem areas. It's using a sign-in, sign-out at sites, which hasn't been utilized across the district just for basic, again, signing in each day and signing out when you leave for the day. I visited a site recently where it was difficult to find the employee. I didn't know if they actually already left for the day or if they were still on site. That's a really significant safety risk. And so, making sure that we have all staff accountable for, if there is an emergency, is critical. It's also a good accountability tool. We also are going to be having forms in every single classroom where staff or custodial staff are able to check off what task they were able to complete in a given night. And so, that way, again, teachers get that, you know, they get the feedback loop from looking in the trash can or looking on the floor, but this is a more formalized process to be able to see over the course of a month. And so, you can see, again, the various communication channels that we're implementing. We also are streamlining our overtime payment process. So, as I said earlier, again, what was a single form turned into 28 forms. Now, it's back to a single form. And so, that's through a blanket process of where we're granting on the front end, 75 hours to each of the custodians who are interested in overtime, and being able to then, through approval, still draw down from that single form. It's allowing us to be able to pay employees quicker, accurately, and, again, streamlining the process. I'm going to keep going. If there are questions, feel free to interrupt me mid-slide. Another big part of this, again, so we talk about, first and foremost, making sure that our custodians are receiving the training and support and accountability they need. But we also know that, again, with these vacancies, that we must increase the applicant pool. We must shorten the timeline for onboarding. And so, again, in partnership with Human Resources, they're doing a lot of things new to try to drive up visibility to our vacancies and help get people in the door for applications. They just did an employment fair. Sarah just did an employment fair over at the adult school, working with them, just working with Juan to be able to, over at the adult school, to be able to create a new program that will be an actual building and grounds course, 60-hour course, that will be able to streamline directly into employment with the district. You know, we've had social media campaigns. We've expanded our online job postings. We've begun using Indeed. Indeed was a great source of applicants in this most recent applicant cycle for the custodians. And we've also created four custodial permanent roving subs or permanent roving positions that are able to go in and help when we do have that vacancy or that absence, and being able to make sure that we have coverage. When we do have the positions filled across the district and we don't have a vacancy in a given night, that team will be able to be quickly deployed to provide extra deep cleaning into the sites that have the greatest need. So, we're adding additional positions to help support the sub needs, while also, again, trying to find new avenues to promote the district opportunities within the custodial service. Reducing the onboarding hurdle, that was another thing that became really clear as I was meeting with the department and with site administrators, was the challenges that we have with, you know, there may be a hiring decision made on the first of the month, and we may not actually have the person start for, you know, two months following. And frequently, that was because of some of the challenges with back screening. Back screening was a process where we do a health evaluation and ensure they can do certain tasks in the position. Something that actually, when we surveyed our peer districts in LA County, it's something that's not done by the majority of districts. It's not something that I did in Ventura County or Santa Barbara County. And the agency we were using limited our appointments in a given week. I think it was four appointments that we had. So, if we had 10 individuals trying to vie for these appointments, oftentimes, the first they could get would be two months out or, again, six weeks out. And then, if something happens, they miss that appointment, they go back into the queue. And so, by being able to remove that, it's saving costs. It allowed us to be able to fund, being able to fund the fingerprinting for our employees. Again, these are some of our lower-paying positions, especially for these individuals. Asking them to pay an $80 fee for fingerprinting can be prohibitive for these individuals who often, again, are hourly employees elsewhere. We're asking them to take time away from work as well as have to pay potentially, you know, half a day or a full day's worth of work to have that. And so, we were able to use the savings from back screens that the district now will cover the cost for all fingerprinting for substitutes and permanent staff. So, again, that hopefully will incentivize people to, once they've had that job offer, to actually go and get fingerprinted to reduce that timeline to onboard, rather than have to think about waiting till next payday. to think about waiting till next payday.
If I can interrupt.
Yes.
So, would we then move that service in-house, or would we, how would that work?
The fingerprint.
For the live screen? Is it live scanning? Is it still live scanning?
It's live scanning, exactly. So, we still, it's through the Department of Justice, it's an FBI background check, and so, we still are using the same agencies that we've used in the past. Any live scan.
We're just taking on the cost.
Right. Live scan itself actually has a process where they can give you a billing number. Department of Justice will bill us monthly, and so, anyone that is getting fingerprinted for our district, they, again, don't pay a penny the day they're there. It's not a reimbursement that they have to wait on. It's just simply that the DOJ will bill us.
Okay. Is there a way for us to then charge the public to offer that as a service externally? Employers are using LiveScan, so now that we're moving it in-house, could we potentially use that as a revenue generator?
I apologize. I don't think I answered your question well. We're not moving the process in-house, we're simply now funding.
We're just paying for it.
Exactly. So, whether they go to the six different entities we use here in Burbank, or the entity I use out in Moore Park, whoever you use that accepts LiveScan accepts the LiveScan billing account code. And so, it's just a matter of us paying, but we're not actually taking the services in-house.
Got it. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. So, we've talked about, again, management, we're talking about expanding visibility to the openings, shortening the timeline, and that's really, again, the multifaceted approach that we're taking to trying to improve the experience at our school sites for our kiddos, as well as for the faculty and staff working there. Do you have questions or feedback for me?
Dr. Weisberg.
I want to thank you, because I sent you many questions this afternoon and did not expect you to respond by the time we met, but they were really, really helpful. So, I just want to thank you for that. I also think it's been really positive to see how quickly you're responding to, you know, when we get copied on, I'm sure we're not even copied on half, or I'm sure we're getting just a tiny bit of the emails you're getting, but to see how quickly you're responding to them, I think is making a really big impact. So, I want to thank you for that. I know it's not the only thing you're doing with your day. I get, I mean, I don't know that this is a question for you, but more one for us to puzzle out, just as, you know, it's not news that compensation is a big part of the puzzle, right? Like, this isn't, we all know, we've known for a while, and so, I guess I want to go back to, you know, it's not going to get solved tonight, but what can we be doing to address it? Because I noticed it too, you know, it's like Taco Bell pays more. And obviously, it's not like we're hoarding money and keeping it away, right? But I wonder what we can do moving forward, because we do know that that's, you know, one of the questions I asked you is, why do you think we have so many absences? And part of it is because the compensation is so low.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering how we address that moving forward, and also, just to thank you for this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, the job study that we approved last year took the lowest positions, the farthest down in the market rate. It's an ongoing process, so that's now part of our annual negotiation process. So, we're currently doing analysis of all the positions, again, benchmarking against the county, and so, when we go back to the table this year, we can look at what's the compensation that we can give to all employees, but also look at the job positions and the ones that are still far low, and adjust them based on the funding that we have. And Dr. Nieman can add a little more.
I just want to add that I have spoken to CSCA already, and the same offer was made last year, and it's made this year as well, that if they would like to carve out compensation ahead of TA-ing, or, I'm sorry, agreeing on the entire negotiating packet, you know, we can TA out and approve through board ratification, compensation, and then still continue to work on language for the articles. So, there is an ability to separate that out if the need to communicate and bring salaries into play faster. It's just an option.
Thank you. I definitely think. It seems like, you know, time is going to play a pretty big role in it. So, it's nice to hear that we're already sort of talking about different ways that we can speed it up. But, I mean, my assumption is, is there's, how much can we do this academic year? We're pretty limited, right?
Well, it depends on negotiations. If we reach an agreement on compensation, we can move that forward anytime this school year. And I know, I'm talking to Ms. Baumann, that's a desire to have a clear focus on negotiations, especially around compensation.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I would definitely like us to examine the compensation, and just, obviously, it's a red flag, and, you know, it seems to make sense to me that, you know, when I've gotten a job, I don't have a college degree, so I'm not that competitive until I have experience behind me. And, you know, how did I get what jobs I got? Hey, I'm working somewhere. You want to come work with me? That's not happening. That's not what's happening with our current custodial crew. Why? Because compensation, and because people are overworked, because there aren't enough substitutes, and it's this vicious cycle, right? So, I think that, you know, we've got to disrupt that cycle in some way, shape, or form. We can do that with compensation, that's a carve-out. It seems like there's a pathway there. But I also think we need to build a bench for subs of some sort, and set a benchmark. By end of year, we need five that are going to be reliable subs. That way, we can demonstrate there's been some movement on this. I like the strike team approach. Frankly, Google formed it up for the more severe approaches. I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I think that that's a long-term strategy deployed by many districts right now, and it's not one. So, I think we need to demonstrate progress, you know, with sincerity, and I think we can do that by saying, look, we've expanded the sub pool by five. If we haven't expanded the sub pool by five, we will do X. Contracting out. What is it? You know, what does that look like? But we need trigger language that shows, if we are not successful, there is more work ahead of us, and, by the way, it benefits you, the employee, not us, the employer, not to get that done. So, whether that, you know, your compensation goes up even higher, frankly, by end of year if we don't hit those benchmarks. We need to demonstrate to us, there's a hook on our end, because it's, these conversations started the summer of last year. We are now in October, it's freezing, I think Ms. Tabit said earlier, it's the first winter, first day of winter. These custodians feel it.
Yeah.
And they felt it for some time. So, they've seen an entire change of season occur, and this is what's amounted from it. Not okay. So, and I appreciate the work. It's not a criticism, but the pace at which we work isn't addressing the urgent feelings that they receive and they have every single day. So, I'd like to see some benchmark language formed by Cabinet, if at all possible, and reported back, again, so we can communicate sincerely, this is what we're doing. If not, we're holding ourselves to account until we get it done. I think that also, frankly, eases some of the volume of complaints that we're receiving from staff weekly, that, hey, we're working on it, this is our approach, we're incentivized to work towards this, and if not, we're going to continue to hear it, but we're also going to be very transparent that we're not meeting those benchmarks. Additionally, Dr. Nieman, it looks like you have something to...
No, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have improved communication cycles between facilities and HR. So, we were not aware, HR does not handle custodial subs, so we were not aware that nobody was.
Awesome.
A sub.
Right.
Nobody was calling. So, we've done a recruitment already, and we're just waiting for a date to interview.
Great.
So, we're trying to get you five.
Perfect.
Those interviews are on Wednesday.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yay.
We wear pink on Wednesdays, and we think about custodial. So...
So, we will improve that communication, so we know how active their subs are.
I love that. I love hearing that. And again, reviews of this shouldn't take this long, but I'm happy that they're occurring. So, I want to hear about it when we hit five, I want to hear about it when we hit 10, because I think 10 is a victory lap when we have reliable, because, again, I think, here's the other thing, in speaking with a lot of our custodial teams, they don't want to just hand it off to some guy or some gal who then comes up and screws up the floors, so that they have to come in and do the work. They have such pride in their work. And I know everybody here appreciates that, but we've got to demonstrate that. So, this helps, but if we hit five, if we hit 10, we can show on the scoreboard, we've moved it, we've addressed it, and we appreciate you. Don't use your vacation time to, you know, not burn out, use your vacation time to spend it with your loved ones. That's important. So, thank you to Dr. Nieman. I'm happy to hear this collaboration. Thank you to Mr. Cantwell, Mr., right, not doctor, great. Trying to be respectful on that front. Employment fair at Burbank Adult School, great. You know, local community colleges, Dr. Gribbins over at Valley College as well. There are a number of job fairs, things like that, that I think, you know, are exploring. I realize we have a limited HR team to be able to manage all this, and just a heads-up, I did this for GCC when I went there, so, and did college fairs and things like that. It's a lot of work. Another thing that may be useful is the city of Burbank has the best program. Burbank Business is employing students today, also has the CREST program. These are potential ambassadors, and if anybody tells our story really well, it's our students. And so, wouldn't it be an interesting concept to see if we could hire some student workers who could help table, who could help do these things? These are lower, you know, again, more entry-level work, entry-level jobs, and kids are our best-selling point here. So, it's a way that we could augment some of the supports without breaking the bank completely and switching to a salaried position, as I know you're impacted. But it's something that I think really could work, and frankly, could attract a whole new generation who can grow up within our employment systems. Great work on the live scanning. Thank you for your clarifying questions on that front. And just, and I appreciate also the health and back screening, the health back screenings generally. So, just thank you, and some progress, but let's report back with benchmarks by end of semester, end of this calendar year, can we get five? Moment that happens, send an email to the board, and then let's keep moving it. We can address some of the more systemic issues, one at a time, but it's with these benchmark steps. So, thank you, guys.
Dr. Agarjani, and of course.
So, you know, a study came out today that there are two jobs for each individual right now out there, and it's not filling in. I'm just talking personal experience, at my work, we're having, at a college, we're having similar issues, but it has to do with also, a lot of people all of a sudden calling in sick. I mean, huge optick. And now, there is this possibility of a flu, kind of a variance coming. My question is, are we ready, or what does it take to, you know, and are we right now having some issues because of, are we having an optick in our own district with some of these workers calling in sick? And are we ready, and what does it really take to really keep this at flow in terms of realistic numbers? Because job markets are a little different right now than, you know, what you were operated on a couple of years ago prediction-wise either, because I know you guys look into what it takes to fulfill these positions, but also how to keep the ball rolling per se. So, what are you seeing right now out there? Are you seeing an increase in, you know, similar to some other districts in terms of, you know, more absentees, you know? And are we ready to, worst-case scenario, you know, if there is something that might come up again, you know?
Yeah. So, this district does have a high absence rate in the custodial service. I don't know if it's exclusive to that, but it is a higher-than-normal absence rate. Anecdotally, I've heard from some that, again, there is, whether it's burnout, or at times some discouragement, given them, again, how hard they're working, that they're not seeing, again, those other positions within their site filled, and so, it's taking some mental health days, or it's just taking some personal days. But we also do have, you know, employee-focused leave policy. When there are opportunities for us to decide what's best for the employer versus the employee, we've defaulted to how do we support the employee? And so, that does mean that there is a lot of opportunities for additional, again, absences or extended absences. As far as one thing that we've been working on, I didn't go into all the details of the overtime, but we previously had a policy in the district that did not allow for our evening or night custodians to really have access to overtime, because we didn't have enough work to do during the, you know, the noon, they start at 2:30, so noon to 2:30 could be a one overtime addition, but because there's so many kiddos still there, it's, there's not, again, there's not really ease for them to get into classrooms. And then, our policy was that no one was allowed to work after 11:00 for a regular custodial position as overtime. That policy's also changed, and so, now, we are granting up to three hours after 11:00 for the employees who are willing to take that. And so, there's a lot of overtime opportunities that, again, that previously were being limited that we're now opening up. So, again, really, the two options are either the people we have working, you know, more hours, getting compensated more, or getting more employees. We've been working closely with CSCA, and they've supported a number of initiatives, but one thing they want to make sure that we're doing is that we are actually offering overtime to our current workforce before we are looking at external options.
And working on expediting overtime pay.
Yes.
Because that was a big thing for.
Exactly.
Custodians who don't want to take on more overtime when they haven't been paid for previously worked. It was, and it also, they felt was a, in their, the way they saw it, a lack of respect for them, not paying them in a timely manner. So, we, that we really need to work on as quickly as possible. And then, I think we'll get more people taking overtime, right?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, first of all. I think it covered a lot of ground, and I know you've been covering a lot of ground since you've been here, and I think that's helped tremendously to, you know, get, start with the, you know, problem resolution. We've already talked about, it's been brought up many times about compensation, and, you know, and thank you for the information that, you know, how we might be able to move forward. The vacancies, I'm glad you explained that it's not all the same job that's been open for a year, but the problem still is, on a daily basis, we, between the vacancies and the people calling, you know, calling out, we're anywhere from 15 to 30.
That's right.
People short, so we're constantly still tremendously understaffed. I'm glad to hear about the interviews, but I worry that there's, what you described is, we had how many, seven or eight or 12, and one person shows up, and this has been an ongoing thing also, that, you know, we've been working on this, and I know Mr. Cross has tried to get more people in, and a lot of times, people who even qualify for the interviews wind up not showing up. You know, and I understand that compensation's a big part of that, but I think we do have to, to Mr. Ferguson's point, and we, and this has been brought up as possibly before, look at, you know, contracting, you know, with a service to fill in these shortages, because we're, we're going on and on with, you know, trying to fill these positions. And I, and there's a lot of great ideas in trying to fill these vacancies too. I know everyone is really working hard at trying to fill these vacancies. Until we change the needle significantly on compensation, I don't know how successful we're going to be. So, I do think that that has got to be a, you know, something that we, and I know it's not a popular option, and we will have to have discussions with CSCA, but I think realistically, as it was pointed out, we've been dealing with this for over a year, and if we can't fill those positions, as they are compensated at the moment, we have to be able to clean our schools and provide a safe and clean environment. So, I do think that that has got to be, and, you know, and maybe there's got to be a timeline, because there's been discussed, but not implemented, and we do have to be able to, you know, use that as a possibility. Thank you. I was about to ask about the overtime, and you did discuss that more. We don't want to overwork our employees, but certainly, anyone who's willing to put in overtime right now, we want to be able to give them that opportunity to help fill in these gaps. So, I, I'm glad we have removed a lot of the barriers to getting it done, and the barriers to getting them paid for their overtime on a regular basis. You explained it a little bit, but can that significantly help us fill in these shortages with the, you know, the overtime for those who, you know, wish to use overtime, or is it just kind of a, you know?
If there was a single solution here, I think that, again, the district staff would have figured it out a year ago. I think that there is an all of the above, and so, this is a component, it certainly is not the only component.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm glad that we have at least removed barriers that if people want to, you know, take that path, we are able to utilize that.
Yeah.
And I think that covered my notes. Thanks.
Thank you. Just quickly, I do support contracting out if we can't meet the benchmarks, but until then, I'm, we're contracting out all over the place, and this is not a problem that's just Burbank unified. There are a lot of districts, government generally is having a hard time finding folks. So, but again, like, in my book, you contract out, but then all of a sudden, you up the pay of your folks, you know, by $20 an hour because we didn't meet those benchmarks. Because otherwise you can just, we have no incentive. It's cheaper to contract out, so why don't we just contract all, the whole thing? So if we're going to go that route, we better be ready to punish ourselves to a certain extent and to demonstrate it's our goal to have, you know, people who are part of the campus community and who belong to us first and foremost before I'm going to go there. So I don't want, what, more than anything I'm doing is, for those CSEA members who are at home right now freaking out that we just said outsourcing in a million different ways, that's not an option for me until we do better on our end. But if we do, as you said, reach a point where, and I'm sorry, we're getting close to it, just to be real though, on the email front, with the number of complaints that we're having. But, but again, we got to talk about leadership at the top before we get, start going, you know, and, and just starting to disrupt all systems. So we've got to be held accountable up here too for, for our part in that. So I'm fine with moving forward. I'm not going to very quickly running, run towards outsourcing on this front, but I want to be clear that that, that option has to be on the table at this point in time, especially as we are heading into cold and flu season. After, after October, after boo, you'll get the flu. That is, it is real. And so, you know, I just wanted to clarify that so that we don't have CSEA members frankly panicking when they're hearing this.
All right, let's move on. Don't go, don't go away.
Yeah, you're stopping me for a little longer.
Because Act Two here, 11B, Report on Facilities and Technology Projects. Mr. Cantwell.
All right, this will be a quick one, but we'll take the opportunity to address some of the questions about Disney, because these are three notice of completions related to Disney and then one contract awarded. We did do the striping this past week and we started it. I've been told it's going to be completed this weekend. We did have an update and you were all forgiven for not seeing it because it was only posted about 10 minutes before this board meeting, but there was an update posted to the Disney website, email sent to the principal, and I believe that communication will get out to the rest of the community tomorrow. But we wanted to make sure that was, was done this week, letting the community know about a few timelines. Again, striping begun this past weekend, is supposed to be completed this coming weekend. We have ordered all of the playground or all of the equipment, the basketball hoops and the handball, basketball hoops, handball court, handball wall, as well as the portable volleyball post. We right now are working on a winter break installation schedule. So that gives us enough time for the equipment to arrive and actually be able to do the work away from student occupied time. So unfortunately, I know our school has been waiting for a long time for these and they do have to wait a bit longer, but that was the meeting that Mr. Cross and I had with the, the principal yesterday, walking the site, discussing the, where the bins will be returning, the emergency bin, as well as two of the storage bins, the, one for PE and I believe one that's used by the custodians there, locations of those. We don't have a timeline for when those will be brought back, but that was, again, one of the focus of the conversation yesterday. But the striping done this weekend and the rest of the playground equipment installed over winter break.
Mr. Cantwell?
Yes.
Can we get their emergency supplies back onto the campus somewhere, somehow, tomorrow? Maybe not tomorrow, but
Tomorrow, I can't guarantee, but yes, I do hear the urgency.
But soon, just, you know, there was a
We have a school without emergency supplies.
Yeah, we have a, we had a 6.0 magnitude earthquake off the coast of California over the weekend. Earthquakes happen all the time. We need to be prepared.
I do want to make sure it's clear that it is right across the street, across the park. And if you look at a high school and how far their emergency bins is actually closer than our middle schools and high schools. I don't want the public to panic and say, we don't have access
Let's make sure that people know that then, if we could do that.
I was going to have the point of clarification as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, all the storage bins are currently in the parking lot directly across the street at the park. And so again, we are going to be eliminating one of those because some of it is just excess storage, but we will bring back the other three units, the emergency unit, the PE, as well as the custodial. So there, but we were talking about the, the return yesterday, and I will make sure we expedite particularly the emergency preparation kit. All right, as far as the, the bond items for this evening, again, we've got three notice of completions related to Disney. The first one is $166,000 contract that was for the chain link fence. The second one's related to it, reinstalling that gate and fence panel that we discussed at the last meeting. So again, the, the two items together, the same fence company, two different aspects of the project, but the fencing completed. The third notice of completion is for the playground. So again, just to distinguish, the playground was installed by Play Power LT Farmington. I believe that's the actual, forgive me, I'm blanking on the, the brand of the playground structure, but they're the ones that actually installed the playground structure. It was completed. We just saw that yesterday also. Again, it looks great. We had a few additions to it that we were able to, to keep on budget that increased accessibility for all students for the playground, some, some different play spaces around the, the periphery of the slides that allow for greater inclusion. And the last one here tonight is item 13U, ratification of award of contract. And this is just as we again, start to, to unwind the, the construction phase of, of the major project at Disney, removing the fire alarm devices on those portables. Other questions for any of the bond items for this evening?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Oh, wait, did you have something? Oh.
So we keep talking about communication. And I have, we don't have a communication.
I believe it's, I believe it's on the one-time funding survey.
Yeah, it was part of our budget reductions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along now. New and unfinished business, 12A, adoption of Resolution Nine declaring emergency and authorizing repairs to furnish and replace obsolete fire alarm and all communicating devices at Roosevelt Elementary School.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education adopt Resolution Nine declaring emergency and authorizing repairs to furnish and replace obsolete fire alarm and all communicating devices at Roosevelt Elementary School to make emergency repairs without public bidding per Public Contract Code Section 1102 and 20113, and that the Board be informed via email when the measures are completed.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Adoption, 12B, adoption of Resolution 10 proclaiming November 7th through 11th, 2022 is National School Psychology Week.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education adopt Resolution 10 proclaiming November 7th through November 11th, National School Psychology Week as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Weisberg. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Say no. Okay, motion carries five zero. Do we wish to read the resolution? Thank you.
We do. Resolution 10 proclaiming the week of November 7th through 11th, 2022 as National School Psychology Week, whereas learning and development are directly linked to the mental health of children and a supportive learning environment is an optimal place to promote mental health. And whereas it is imperative that society emphasize the needs of children and youth and invest in education as a top priority, and whereas sound psychological principles are critical to proper instruction and learning and, and social and emotional development, prevention and early intervention, and support for a culturally diverse student population. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to deliver mental health services and academic supports that lowers the barriers to learning and allows teachers to teach more effectively. And whereas school psychologists facilitate collaboration and helps parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, promote protective factors, create safe schools, and access community resources. And whereas school psychologists are trained to assess barriers to learning, utilize database decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. And whereas the staff of the Special Education Department provides schools and school psychologists and school psychologist interns who are dedicated to their mission to ensure that schools are responsive to the psychological needs of students and to help California's children and youth attain intellectual, social, and personal competence. Whereas it is appropriate that Californians take the time to recognize the important and vital role that school psychologists play in the, in the personal and academic development of our state's children. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education that November 7th through the 11th be celebrated as National School Psychology Week.
Thank you. Moving on to 12C, adoption of amendment to the Declaration of Need for Emergency Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development, CCLAD permit, Emergency Bilingual Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development, the BCLAD permit, General Education Limited Assignment Permit, GLAP request for certificated staff.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education adopt an amendment to the Declaration of Need for Emergency Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development, CLAD permit, and Emergency Bilingual, Bilingual Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development, BCLAD permit, and General Education Limited Assignment Permit, GLAP, request for certificated staff as presented.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for the second, Mr. Frittner. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to 12E, amended master contract for non-public, oh.
D. 12D.
Oh, I jumped right past that. Oh, and that one's not important. We'll just keep going. I'm just kidding. 12D, approval of board policy AR 5127, graduation ceremonies and activities, and AR 6162.6, use of copyrighted materials. Do I have a motion from someone?
President Tabit. I will, go ahead, Mr. Frittner. I will move that the Board adopt the revision of AR 5127, graduation ceremonies and activity, and AR 6162.6, use of copyrighted materials as presented. And just a question, was there a board subcommittee that worked on this? Or is it just coming to the Board?
It is just coming to the Board.
Okay. We, we had traditionally worked in subcommittees just because policy language and policy revisions can be rather dense in, in kind of this format. So if we can kind of restore that kind of facilities budget was one side of the, and then kind of student and academic experience on the other, that would be good, just to vet this in advance, so that way we're not chopping through language.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second by Mr. Frittner.
Would you like me to comment?
Sure.
So it is, it's a state requirement that all seniors must fill out the FAFSA form.
Or do the OPTDA form.
Or do the OPTDA form. So it makes sense in terms of ensuring that the students are being compliant, that we make it part of graduation requirements. And as far as the policy on copyrighted materials, what we have done is created an opportunity under certain parameters that are pretty strict for teachers to be able to show clips of an R-rated film. So for example, Schindler's List, there might be an important clip that needs to be shown to, to further discussion in class or to enhance curriculum under, under the conditions written in the policy, they'd be allowed to do that.
Quick question. So how are we going to let the, in what ways are we going to communicate this change to the teachers? Because in reading over it, it said at least two weeks' notice, that parents have to sign off, things like that. So is the parental sign off something that the parents do, like all the paperwork in the beginning of the year, or only if the teacher's like, hey, I want to show this thing?
So no, the teachers have to present the materials to the principal, get that pre-approved, and then they have to ask specifically by teacher, the parents for permission.
Okay. And is this, since we haven't been able to do it before, this will be sort of a newish process for teachers?
This is definitely a new process, for sure.
Okay, and so how are we going to share the, I mean, I assume we, we already have plans in place.
Right, so we'll communicate this at a secondary principals meeting, then again, at an API meeting, so the assistant principals know, and then it'll be a communication from the principal to all teachers.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to add though, that this also came up as a request from the teachers, and they understood that there would be parameters involved.
Little bit.
Always.
Little bit.
Always, thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, motion, discussion, all those, are we finished?
Yeah, that's all I had.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Now 12E, amended master contract for non-public, non-secretary agencies for special education.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I will move that the Board of Education ratify the master contract for special, special education students to be provided by Maxim Healthcare Services, Home Care, Atlas Behavior Services, and Window LLC, non-public secretarial agency effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 through the designated account strings, and that the authority to sign the contract be exercised pursuant to be USD AR 3314 as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferguson. And for the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. 12F, acceptance of gifts.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I will move that the Board President, or that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district, and that the Board President convey appreciation in an upbeat and energetic tone.
Second.
All right, upbeat and energetic.
I'm not feeling energy yet.
I know, I'm really tired, but I'm going to make it happen
Push through it.
For you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you.
And for everybody else listening. Thank you so much to
Wait.
Oh, we have to vote.
We got to vote.
You know, and that, all we, okay, please. All those in favor of approving the gift report, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five zero energetically.
I'm liking it better.
Here we go, just for you, sir.
Thank you.
A, Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $15,000 to be used for field trips at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Yeah, that is a big wow, thank you. B, Deb Connors wishes to donate to the district school supplies for instructional and school use at Burbank Community Day School. C, Burbank Arts Education Foundation, BAEF, wishes to donate to the district $1,500 to be used for visiting artists at Community Day School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation, BAEF, wishes to donate to the district $478.95 to be used for DEI classroom library at Providencia Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $3,320 to be used for multicultural and scientific assemblies at Providencia Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $3,336.25 to be used as needed at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $4,000 to be used for music programs, grades K through 3 at Ralph Emerson Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $5,499.63 to be used for updating the classroom library at George Washington Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $999.50 to be used for headphones for music and art in rooms 33 and 35 at George Washington Elementary School. George Washington PTA wishes to donate to the district $4,500 to be used for field trip buses at George Washington Elementary School. George Washington PTA wishes to donate to the district $4,500 to be used for dance and assemblies at George Washington Elementary School. George Washington PTA wishes to donate to the district $200 to be used for fall festival prizes at George Washington Elementary School. There's more, don't. George Washington PTA wishes to donate to the district $3,000 to be used for teacher supplies at George Washington Elementary School. Charities Aid Foundation America wishes to donate to the district $180 to be used for materials and supplies at George Washington Elementary School. The Kroger Company wishes to donate to the district $215 to be used as needed at Dolores Huerta Middle School. WKS Pizza Corporation wishes to donate to the district $513.63 to be used for the Student Council at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Thank you to all of our donors and all of those working hard for the don, for the funds to exist in order to be donated to the district. Greatly appreciated. And with that, all good news, we can move to the consent agenda.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'll move items 13A through 13V. Except for, yeah?
I'm sorry, Vice President Ferguson, there was one amended item, so the agenda script, actually, I wrote out actually, I wrote out the
Got it.
motion language.
So
For you.
So she's the only one with the agenda script. So 13A through 13H, and then 13J through 13V.
Correct.
Look at that. No script.
Yeah.
You got the energy part. I'm not expecting both.
Okay, thanks for that, I think. Okay, all those
Yeah, second.
Second by Mr. Frittner. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, A through H and J through
V.
V? For victory? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Consent agenda carries, except for 13J.
Aye.
13I, and I was looking right at that when I said it. Approval of amended consultant agreement for John White. We don't need to vote on that separately?
We don't need a separate motion, because it was amended before the meeting. It wasn't amended on the fly, so.
Okay, thank you. We're not addressing the board, okay? Meeting, oh, no, no. Okay. Look, I, all I have to do is read the retirees. Are you all okay with this? I, I understood that. I understood that. I'm just kidding. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, so congra, no, no passing retirements. Ah, okay, thank you. Recognizing our three retirees this meeting, Tiffany DiSimone, Rebecca Rodriguez, and Stella Verano. Thank you very much for your dedicated years of service to the district, and good luck, and enjoy your years of retirement. And? Yes. Would you like to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Roger Fromer, who was the father of Assemblymember Dario Fromer, who was like a father to me. It's been difficult. And I also want to send my deepest condolences to Rosa Fromer, who is also the wife and actually a former teacher. Roger, you will be missed. We love you. Thank you very much.
Meeting adjourned.